All right, welcome everyone. We are going to start, we're not going to actually go in for a meeting first, we're going to do our swearing in first. So I want to welcome you to the swearing in of Commissioner-elect Joe Herclay, who will be Commissioner by the time we start. Yeah, our fellow board members, I'll meet here to swear him in. I just want to welcome everyone who hasn't been here before. We are really excited to welcome new member of our board. Joe brings with him a lot of historic knowledge and a lot of attention to detail, so that's going to be really great. I do want to just say there are cups that were from Marlboro Day, which I have to ask them. So please get your resident cup underway at the doors. We will allow our clerk to receive one at the door. And just so everyone knows how fast it works, we're going to just bring in, then we'll enjoy some like refreshments in China, and we'll get started with our regular meeting.
With all the announcements.
All right, because I'm going to try and filter.
I just want you to know, I had, I had about, what, we didn't have like twenty people, twenty-five people ready to walk in the parade?
We were out in the parade, I was in the party with the costume distinction dance.
For a little bit. Did you want to hold a special consultation? Constitution, your constitution. You want me to hold it for you?
Of the friend.
Victor, did you have to hold it?
Yeah.
Neighbor, I'm his neighbor. Hi, Darnell. How are you? Nothing.
How are you guys?
I'm good. My garden is holding you.
There you go, raise your right hand. Do you have to make, do you want to swear or affirm?
I will affirm.
Okay. I.
I.
State your name.
Joe Herclay.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the officer.
Execute the officer.
Commissioner for the town of Upper Marlboro.
Commissioner for the town of Upper Marlboro.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the charter and laws of this town.
And the charter and laws of this town.
Congratulations.
It's blue-black? Is it blue? It's blue-black.
And then all the pictures are going to have a little show in it.
Okay.
And Darnell, you're going to have to say your name without a picture.
You know, it's.
Oh.
But it's still, it's still a little bit blue.
I can't hear you.
Well, congratulations, how many?
We can, here, here, let me, can you, can they hear me talking? So we're going to go ahead and pause the recording for a bit while we have a brief little celebration. We will be back on at seven o'clock for the regular meeting.
Thank you, number six.
All right, welcome everyone to this town special meeting on Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is seven oh one P M., and I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Special Assistant Thomas, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Well, I appreciate those. President, Commissioner Colwell.
Here.
Mayor Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner what?
Here.
Commissioner Herclay.
Herclay, here.
Public Works Director, Don Avon.
Here.
Attorney General, Kay Anderson.
Present.
Deputy Judge, Hertz.
Here.
All candidates.
Okay, if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Start. We will move on to the review of the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry.
Town Attorney Lynn Boyer is, she's, she's present.
Oh, we also have our town attorney Lynn Boyer present with us on, online. And she is from the law firm Levon Rock.
Is she a Zoom user? You know, if she's, would you compare her as well?
Yes, yes, she should be.
That's Tracy, and then there's this, so Zoom user, it must have been Lynn.
There, yes.
Okay.
They're all, same, same answer, yes.
Yeah. All right. So we'll look at a review of the agenda. We've already sworn in Commissioner Herclay. And he is seated with us. And so I'm going to just ask that we, you know, strike that, so we don't do it twice. Are there any other changes or adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Go move. Is there a second?
I think it is.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. So that's unanimous of all of us? All right, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Go move. Is there a second? Yes. Are there any comments or question, or comments about the consent agenda before we move forward with a motion? Hearing none. If you would call the roll for that, please, for our Special Assistant Thomas.
Commissioner, I. Commissioner Colwell.
Aye.
Mayor Franklin.
Aye.
You know what?
Aye.
Can you hear her?
Aye.
You can hear her.
Thank you. All right, we'll move right into our Charter Amendment Resolution two dash two thousand and twenty-five, Council Manager Form of Government. This is an introduction of this resolution. I do just want to, because we have new people here, thank you. So what will happen is we'll, we'll review this, ask questions of staff, then we'll hear public comment. If you want to engage in public comment, you're going to walk up to the podium. You state your name and the street you live on, you don't need to tell us your address. We asked that you try to keep your comments to three minutes per person. So we're going to get started. So, should we turn it over to the attorney? We're going to turn it over to Attorney Boy.
This is someone trouble signing the Zoom.
Oh, so that's.
That's her. Can you bump her?
Do you know anybody?
Yeah.
I. And I, I'm looking at her permission to. I guess. Oh, so maybe. Who are, if that, if that is her due comment.
Oh, so he's trying to promote her to a panelist. Can you let her know that she needs to accept that decision?
Or that's not her.
Welcome, welcome. We're having a brief recess for technical purposes. We want to read it into the record while we're getting it in. Yeah, you want me to do that?
Wait. You'll have to.
I can read it in. So. The Charter Amendment Resolution number two dash two thousand and twenty-five is a Charter Amendment Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, amending various sections of the Charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro to alter the form of government for the Town of Upper Marlboro from a Board of Commissioners form of government to a Council Manager form of government and make other non-substantive amendments. This is on page four of the packet. And the, the actual amendments go all the way to page. They go to page thirty-seven. And for the public, when you're reading, changes to these, new things are in all caps, and things that are being removed have a strike through.
They're in spare packets.
We, yes, there's a packet right there. We need, if anyone needs an additional packet, we have one, one left. Yeah, if, if you can, we're going to have our town administrator do an overview while we get our town attorney in so that she can answer questions.
So the town, we had a study session in February of this year where we, it was open to the public and the board and public discussed some of the changes for the charter. One of the biggest changes, well, the biggest change is formally changing the former government that we operate under from a commissioner former government to council manager. Some of the other, some of the other changes that were discussed, we discussed stagger terms. Currently, the terms are two years and those terms will increase to four years and they'll, they'll be staggered, well, stagger terms and term limits.
Four, no, four years.
Yeah, we'll move from two years to four years. Right. Let me go through the rest of my notes. The mayor will continue to be selected by the board. There was a discussion, should the mayor be elected individually as, as the mayor? But it was determined that the mayor will continue to be appointed by the board. There will be a vice mayor or mayor pro temp and that, that person is going to fill in when the mayor is not available. It helps with continuity of government. We had a period of time where the mayor was absent and there were some functions of government that could not move forward because they required the mayor's signature and only the mayor had, had the authority to make certain decisions. So having a mayor pro temp is, is going to change that and allow the town to continue to move forward if the mayor is not available or unable to perform their duties. There was also just a discussion with finance and the role of treasurer. Basically, the way that the charter is currently written, the role of treasurer and the role of president, there's a bit of conflict there. So to remove that, you know, the chief financial officer would become the town manager. It would no longer be the treasurer appointed by the board.
I think there's the row. Recall clause.
Yes. And there's also a recall clause that is, that's been presented as well. There's also additional, additional causes with respect to censure and personnel, personnel issues related to the commissioners as well. And before this, we had the appointments amendment that had been made, but that's also a part of the broader changes here.
I want to also note that we're going, we have, as for the appointments, there was a survey and that the results of that showed seventy-four percent, I think, in favor. We're also going to put out a survey for these changes because we want your input on this. We have been working on it for three years. It's, it's been a long process. But we want to make, have an accessible way for the community to engage with that and let us know what you think. I know we may have questions, so do we have, as I turn it on? Were we able to get?
She's still, I'm, I'm, you're calling her now.
Okay.
She's having a technical difficulty joining.
So for now, we can ask our questions to the town administrator and just to keep things orderly. I'll start with Commissioner Brooks.
Well, I think.
Hold on one second. Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I've been going over this for the past week and the last part you talked about was, I am just turning it over to. That's the part.
Yeah, that's in.
You said it would be turned over to one of the packets, page seventeen.
Okay. Which one in the packet, seventeen?
Seventeen.
Basically, changing powers and duties of the treasurer to powers and duties of the town manager.
Okay. So all that will go down to the manager. That's the only thing I have.
Yeah, so, okay, can I have a quickie back over this question? I just want to try and keep things orderly, so, but.
Okay, so it's about finding, so, so we're removing the treasurer and we are adding a chief financial officer. Is that person going to actually work for the town, for the town, like sit here in the office and report to the, the town administrator?
Well.
Sorry, it is the town administrator, yeah.
Financial officer is the.
Oh, okay, okay. So I thought town manager, the language town manager.
I said town administrator, but it's town manager. I mean, it's changing the title of the town manager.
Okay.
Probably the town manager will outsource it to an accountant and then review it and have oversight over it.
Okay, because you still have chief financial officer, treasurer. And then you have town manager. So this.
Oh, I, I was wrong about the notation. So things to be removed are in double bracket, are those brackets?
Okay.
I thought they were strikers. So that will be removed. It will say town manager, not treasurer.
Okay. And so I thought we talked about having someone, instead of having a treasurer, like actually pay someone and it'd be cheaper for us to have someone in-house to do this stuff. I thought we discussed that it would be cheaper for actually have someone, instead of outsourcing it the way we do now.
So I think that is a discussion under budget instead of under charter. So can we put a pin in that so we get to the budget? Okay. Thank you. All right. Do you have any other, like, or anything else? I'm going to go back to Commissioner Colwell.
Thanks, Colwell.
Oh, no problem. No questions at the moment. The one thing that I was looking for last time, the recusal clause, it seems to be in there now. And I think the rest of this encapsulates what we were discussing at that work session we were. Agreeing with that, the name too, so.
Commissioner Herclay, I know that you just joined us, but I know that you've been part of our meetings and you were at that work session in February, so I know you may have questions, so.
Two questions and comments. In the summary of this, was it mentioned that this also proposes changing commissioners' terms to four years instead of two years?
It, it's not specifically outlined in this summary.
Exactly.
Sorry.
I just saw it. I saw it.
He's asking in this.
On page seventeen, but the.
He's asking in this, this section.
And such. Well, no, the, the summary that the town administrator gave, I don't believe he, did he mention that? Okay, so I, I believe that to be substantive. And so the, the description at the top says other non-substantive amendments, and I think that's potentially significant, that and the recall notice, you know, those are, should be called out in the description of this. In the third whereas, says that the Board Commissioned Charter Review Committee to review the town charter and based on recommendations from the Charter Review Committee finds that changing the form of government from a Board of Commissioners form of government to a Council Manager form of government would result in a more efficient and effective governance for the town. I asked for, for that and the town administrator gave me a copy. And I can't find anything regarding change of government in there. The memo that they issued on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. They do mention staggered elections, but then term limits for the president, and, and just assume that the staggered elections would then be every year. No mention of breaking out to four years. The only thing that I saw regarding stuff in this was moving treasurer to a staff position. And, and in regards to that, have we asked how the auditor feels about the chief executive officer and the chief financial officer being the same person?
This is, I was just going to say, they, they think it's pretty common, commonly done. And our lawyers worked very hard in drafting this, so I assume that that is.
Well, it is pretty common that the town manager or the town administrator also handles the finances, handles the budget as well. The way that the, the way that our finances and our bank accounts are currently managed, it's, I don't have the authority to make, I can't make, I can't unilaterally make any budgetary changes. I can't move money without the permission of the mayor or the treasurer at, at this point. So as long as you have that, for lack of a better term, checks and balances in place, auditors are generally okay with that, and this is pretty consistent with how most municipalities run.
Right, because, I mean, in, in the changes, I think the, I believe the, the town president currently is allowed to make purchases up to ten thousand dollars, but usually the treasurer would then have to still sign the check, so there's still two people involved. But with this, would that allow one person to spend up to ten thousand dollars without needing?
No, I, I wouldn't be allowed to do that.
Okay.
The financial provisions are still that, that the mayor is the only one authorized to issue or to spend up to ten thousand dollars and a check's over, is it two thousand or five thousand that we both signed? I think it's five. So there would always, those financial provisions still exist.
Actually.
I don't know that they're in the.
I believe I saw that, that changed, and let me find it again.
Currently, yeah.
It's five thousand. Well, if that's the case, then you would still be a signer, and maybe you're still going to be another signer.
There would, yeah, there would still be commissioners as signers. Yeah.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't change.
Process, it wouldn't change the process.
So it would be the mayor pro temp, mayor. Would more likely is.
So instead of.
And the town manager.
Like, this week, staff had to explain to me a trailer that we need and what it is for and what it does. And I, I don't understand as easily like trailers and public works and all the stuff that they're telling me that this does. Now, Public Works is going to explain to someone who has experience and knowledge of oversight of a small government for many, many years, and he's going to say, I really need X trailer, and the town manager is already going to know why he needs a trailer. Right, it's going to make things more efficient. So that, that is probably a much more efficient and professional way.
Well, but we also have provisions in, in this charter and just in Maryland law as well that prevent over expenditure from appropriated funds. Like, we're not able to spend more money in a department than has been appropriated. That check and balance already exists just within the law, correct?
Right, because the Director of Public Works is asking me about this trailer, there's a deal on it, blah, blah, blah. But I said, do you have a line item with the funds to fund it? Like that, if the answer to that question is no, then the answer is no, we can't spend the money. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. We do want to hear from you.
So it's page twenty-six, section eighty-two fifty-six, purchasing and contracts. Off, so it changes it to the town manager instead of president. Yeah, sorry, page twenty-nine of the booklet. Yeah, I don't know what the difference is between twenty-six and section six, item B. And then, grade twenty-nine. So the town manager, as prescribed by ordinance, may be authorized to make individual purchases, execute contracts up to ten thousand dollars. So it does move that purchasing power from the president to town manager.
But two people still have to sign the check.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't, it has to be, if it is five thousand, two people have to sign.
Correct.
There's only one staff member authorized to sign checks, so there's no way that the town manager can do it without.
Even, even five thousand dollars, I mean, if. I don't, I don't know if our auditor would have an issue with that, because before they had, they wanted to make sure that there were always two people involved, that it's not.
And they still do, and they, and, yeah, we fill out all sorts of forms and write all sorts of certificates.
But having, having them act as, I, I don't know if we need something in some other ordinance to then say, you know, they can't just, the, the chief executive officer cannot write checks. You know, they can counter sign the checks, but you need someone else.
You're saying that it should be, he's, he's basically saying it should be listed in here as a part of the document, even though that is a part of our process already. If Sarah, if the mayor wants a check for whatever and it's over five thousand dollars, then she brings me in, we talk about it, and then I'll sign, I'm the second signer. And if I'm not available, Colwell is the second.
But that's how it works.
That's how it worked, I'm just saying, that's the, that's the foundation.
But also, that's in the procurement ordinance, you have an ordinance that outlines that already.
Right.
Right, I'll have to.
And where, where.
So he was.
I'll, I'll have to see what the current ordinance is then. Another question in what is page seven of the booklet. For the reasons that someone can be removed from office. One of the reasons is fails to attend three or more consecutive regular meetings to the council without being excused by the council. What qualifies as a regular meeting? Is the last, this is because this was listed as a special town meeting, not a regular town meeting, and so was last month's. Would work sessions be considered a regular meeting?
I think the intent around this was that the, when we say regular meeting, it would, a, a meeting where business is being conducted, legislative funds, you're making, the board is voting and making decisions and passing ordinances and things like that. I can talk to Attorney Ruff and see if there's some clarifying language there. Okay. But like, like a special meeting like today, that would be included. That, I mean, that would be included.
Yeah, see, and there's, there's also the question of whether or not this should have been declared as a special meeting. Because you can have a regular meeting that is not at its normal time. Special town meeting, you actually have additional powers at because you can pass ordinances without the same waiting periods as required typically.
Okay, so I just, I want to put a pin on that, because that's not germane, but go ahead.
That's okay, I want to clarify, the, the meetings and the way that they're placed on, on the agenda, we, we confer with our attorneys before we do that. So this meeting being a special meeting is what they said it was going to be, so that's why it's a special meeting.
And it's due to the fact that it, this would normally be a work session, but we're only having one meeting this month. So it's a special meeting instead of a regular meeting, but we're not, we're not doing anything out of the ordinary from what we would do for a regular meeting. We can get back to that.
It was common in the past for the budget meetings to be a special meeting because then it was allowed to take effect by the end of the month to make sure that you.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing. That's exactly what we're doing, because we only have a one meeting this month.
Well, it would often be like the last one, you know, right at the end of, anyways.
Get back to the charter.
Okay, so the Charter Amendment are in, what is page eight? Section E two dash fourteen dot two A, the mayor and council members shall be publicly recalled by a majority of the registered voters of the town. Now, later it says that the results of the election, if a majority of the registered voters in this, oh, this is on page nine, item D. If a majority of the registered voters in a special election vote in favor of recalling the office holder in question upon certification of the results of the election. Majority in this case says majority of the registered voters, which means out of the five hundred and sixty-two registered voters, you'd need to have two hundred and eighty-one vote to recall.
But if we don't have that many voters, we have to go by what we have.
Or that.
That actually votes participated.
But also, I mean, if it doesn't sound like someone, it's a pretty major thing and you would think you would get that level of turnout to recall someone. I don't know, but also, let's go to Clayton to answer the question at heart, or Lynn.
I think Lynn is.
Is what is that legal, legally defining as?
There's a couple hundred people coming through.
Yeah.
Then that means whatever it was is not significant.
All right, she said she was, okay. Is she unmuted or?
Hi, this is, this is Lynn, I, I did just unmute, and I apologize, I seem to be having some technical difficulties.
Hold on, Lynn, we can't hear you very well, give us a minute to get the volume up.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we should be able to hear you now, Lynn.
Okay, and, and I apologize, I can't understand why, I can't join Zoom tonight, but apparently I cannot. Um, so your question was under the, under section eighty two fourteen point two, the, the recall provision, if I'm understanding correctly?
Correct.
Okay. And the.
So the results of the election is a majority of the registered voters, not the majority of votes cast.
Correct.
So you would still need two hundred and eighty one people to vote affirmative to remove someone.
That is correct, and that, I, I mean, that's the way it is drafted, and that was drafted based on looking at a number of other jurisdictions and how they handle that.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna make sure we get all the questions.
In section eighty two fifty eight, town attorney changes the town attorney for being a member of the bar of the Maryland's uh, Court of Appeals to being of the bar of the Maryland Supreme Court, how many are in each bar?
Sorry. I can answer that question.
Yes.
In, um, yeah, in um, in, last year, the the, the, the Maryland Court of Appeals used to be the highest court in the state of Maryland, and they renamed it the Maryland Supreme Court. So it is the, the same number of attorneys in both bars, I just, I just renamed the court last year.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, I, um, missed one, uh, just above. Um, as clerk to the board was struck, uh, you also need to strike either as just before it. That's in eighty two, the very last thing in eighty two fifty seven. Um, there was also a tense issue in eighty two fifty nine A. Uh, nor any council member shall receive an appointment during the term.
Where are you, Lynn?
Uh, page thirty.
Okay. Down here. Okay.
What is the question?
But it's, it's, there seems to be a tense issue. Um, so the rewriting would be neither the mayor nor any council member shall received such appointment during the term for which he or she shall have been elected.
Okay, so we just need to take off a D there.
And then I guess there's still the outstanding question of, it's section eighty two ninety of, are we actually going the county six hundred dollars?
Oh, eighty two ninety needs to.
Uh, page thirty four.
Yeah. So eighty two ninety should actually be struck entirely instead of modified. Hold on, I, I wanna make sure. You've had a chance to have all your questions answered, cuz.
I guess then there's just, uh, the charter resolution certificate doesn't have the notice of the review for the sufficiency in it. But that's not part of the amendment itself.
Oh, for the attorney's signature, you mean?
Yeah, and also the listing of when the public meet, public hearing was published, when it was held, when it was published in the newspaper, et cetera.
That's just a drafting thing.
Yes, and, and those haven't occurred yet, so we weren't able to complete those dates.
Well, in, in the past, there's been lengths to remind people that these need to be done.
Yeah, it was, I, I think it's just attorney preference and how they draft legislation, so thank you, Lynn. Anything else?
Uh, that's what I saw in my quick preview of it, I might have more later.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna ask the question uh, of, of Lynn, if we want to adjust the um introduction, can I kind of make that adjustment? Can I, can I read a new introduction into the record and um use that to base a motion to introduce?
Uh, yes, you, you can do that.
So I'm gonna read a new in, uh, introduction into the agenda. Um, and then we're going to make a public comment, and then we will consider a motion uh to introduce, so. Charter Amendment Resolution number two dash twenty twenty five, a charter amendment resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, amending various sections of the Charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro to alter the form of government for the Town of Upper Marlboro from a Board of Commissioners form of government to a council manager form of government, comma, change council terms to four years, comma, to add a recall provision, comma, and to make other non substantive amendments. So now we would like to hear your public comment, um, and I will just remind everyone, there's also gonna be a survey, even if you comment tonight. Um, please, please, please take the survey. Um, you come, oh, sorry, I should, public comment procedures, come on up to the podium, you can line up if you want to line up. If you are online, go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll come to you at the end of the on-site folks, and you're just gonna state your name and the street you live on. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian Calacott, I don't know what street it's created. Um, I think you probably heard me say something similar before, because I look at this charter, I think it's wrong, probably very inception of this draft. Um, even notwithstanding that a recall is available, I'm against the four years. Uh, recall turnout requiring even thirty percent of the people, I don't believe thirty percent of the people who are registered voters in this town actually know that the town hall exists, but that would be just me. So knowing recall is very, very unlikely to ever happen. I will press back against the four years, say two years. Uh, basically, it takes away my voice. By making the terms four years, you have my voter decision-making ability. I participate in the meetings, you see me up here a lot, maybe not every day, I'm on Zoom nearly every time we have a meeting. But no matter what input I give to the citizen, everyone can nod their head and ignore it. So I think that the best thing to give me decision-making ability is to have the ability to vote for someone who has presented a very good plan for the town, and I agree with most of their platform. So since that's going away and making it every four years, I can just stand up here and say stuff and talk to people individually and hopefully sway them, but it's not quite the same, you have to agree than actually casting a vote. That's a big difference. Since we have about seven hundred citizens, I think it benefits the citizens a lot to have this vote. Noting it benefits the commissioners, don't wanna deal with having an election and saying it's expensive. When we just had an election, I heard the election judge say, when I was here, that there was a good benefit to him in reviewing the procedures and doing the, that was an actual comment. Um, so, since we have so much low participation in committees and so much low participation in meetings, this, by the way, is the most I've seen in here since I come, so it's pretty darn good, I'm glad you guys are here. Um, I think it best that we continue to be able to vote every two years. Um, it's really not a large city, your campaigns aren't gonna be very expensive. Um, I, I doubt I can present a good argument there. But really, it's like, even if you have a physical disability, you can get assistance and go out and canvass the town, it's not that big that you can't do that. So passive listening is not working for our town. Active participation, walking around and talking to people does. If you, if you disagree, please, you know, give your voice, I'm very interested to hear what you have to think about that. Uh, when I look online and other newspapers around the country with similar decisions, I know this type of change is done through referendum vote. It is somewhat unusual to see this as a vote the way it is for this type of charter amendment, this specific clause I'm saying, the four-year terms. So referendum would be more applicable for such a major change than to actually vote on it from people who are just listening to the guy they can ignore. Um, referendum, by the way, is me having a vote. Um, if there's concern about continuity, experience is important, I agree with that, guess what, there's five people here.
You, you can finish, you can finish your sentence.
People here, and if all five are voted out, there's gotta be a good reason that all the voters did. That's, that's my point, it's like, you will have a continuity, everyone's good on the board, they have great intentions. Some may get voted out, but I seriously doubt all five would get voted out, or even four would get voted out. And if they are, it's probably for darn good reason. So please reconsider and just make it two-year, yes, it's more expensive, but it keeps the vote in these people's hands and the decision-making ability, thank you for giving me excellent minutes, I do appreciate it.
Of course.
I will, could they conservate, obviously?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Mary Palmer, I, we moved here in twenty twenty one from Alexandria to Virginia. And the city council in Alexandria also had this three-minute rule, but it is two hundred times popular supplies this year. I felt like when I moved here, that I might be something more like in the town hall that you have in New England, where there's a sense of participation, a more democratic kind of feeling. Um, uh, I apologize for speaking out earlier, it, you know, that was inappropriate, but it would be nice. Uh, we felt in Alexandria that we could not come to any resolution, that we weren't really heard, it just got reported and dropped. And uh, there was never any uh, uh, process to working out decisions where the, where, where we felt that we were part of it. Um, I admit that I've not been focused um on local governance or, you know, the demands of property and national politics and reading my medical career. Um, but as I lift my head out of the sand in terms of our town government, I'm really dismayed. I, uh, it's not shocking to find the lack of transparency. I really worked, I spent hours looking for information behind the Charter Amendment Resolution number zero two dash two two thousand twenty five, I see that there's been a lot of work done, I hear about it here, but try to find it, it's not easy for a citizen. So um, it proposes a council, council manager form of government, I see nothing about that. And it also, uh, so it may or may not be a sizable change in the form of government, but it includes doubling the length of commissioner term limits. And uh, in a separate, separate corollary ordinance, um, has vacancies by appointments uh, after the halfway through the term, um, that just seems to take power away from the people. Um, where I, where might I find records to discuss the pros and cons of such major changes? Where might I read details about community input? I have reviewed the minutes of the previous month's sessions and find none, neither minutes of uh, neither those or the minutes of the February eighth uh charter review study session that I just heard about had anything. This is a bare skeleton, no details, how can I learn? How can I be informed? How can I know who I wanna vote for? There is nothing in the records, the minutes are not adequate. Um, I think that a change of this size, and actually, I, I end up, I have the same concurrent conclusion uh, that a government change should be a ballot initiative and not something that is, is up to um, the, the um commissioners. And I think it also deserves further review and public discussion. Um, I don't know what is really behind a, a manager of, you know, council government. And is it the same? Are we having the same government with a different name and going through three year, years of work to get to that? Let's kind of get real here, it's a double, the term limits is up here. And I think, I don't know really what's behind the rest of this, it makes me feel mistrustful. And, and that was sort of what the, the, the three-minute thing did to the people in Alexandria. We felt we could not be heard, and so my time is up, but I will say that I, I really do hope that uh, there could be a, a greater sense of transparency, greater publication to the public. There needs to be a way that people like me can find out, I mean, I've only spent hours, hours trying to get informed. Thank you.
So I just, I wanna answer the question of, of how you can find out our deliberations, so the YouTube channel has the meeting from February eighth completely recorded, it's, it's black because we recorded it on the phone without video, but you can hear all of our deliberations and conversation. Um, so it is right there on the YouTube channel, and once this is introduced, we are going to, our website is going to be updated. There is a, actually a community engagement portal on our website, um, and all the information from the past charter amendment is in there. And this information will be put there with a link to that video, a link to this document, and a link to the survey. And we'll be making sure that all the residents have the survey, because we do actually care and want you all to be engaged. And we, because we have low turnout here, we wanna find ways that meet you where you're at as a resident of this town and make it easy for you to engage with us, so, um, next public comment.
I wanna mention.
Oh, you're, you're naming.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was trying to back your street. Um, I, I wanna reinforce what Brian Calacott and Mary Palmer had stated regarding our inability to have as citizens control who's on the board. Changing the charter, making the four-year terms, this is a huge change in our law that is, if you look at the participation of the number of people in this town, they're not reading this, they're not here. I haven't seen landing, we used to get landings once a month, you now get only if we're lucky, twice a year. If you wanna reach out to the people, that's the way to do it. Also, walking around the town and handing out the flyers once a month would get you out and talking to the people and having people talk to you as well. So I'm just, I'm asking you to engage in the citizens, not sit in this meeting and say nobody shows up. Because the people who do show up, who do come to this meeting, who do talk and do, do try to read what's going on and understand the implications of it, nobody's hearing the other side of what, what is going on with this, they need to hear both the opposing and the front end of it. I also sat on that charter review, and I do not remember ever saying we wanted a council member uh, manager in, in one, in this thing, I believe it was asked us to look at it. And the only thing that we came up with was, as the commissioners have a commissioner over each one of the areas to, for oversight, as opposed to just having a president or an administrator. And it looks like now we're gonna have a manager and an assistant, or a, a, a town administrator and a manager, as well as now a chief financial officer. And I looked at the current um, structure of the organization, and I didn't even see the clerk in there anywhere. And when I went through the budget book, there was nothing that says, says we even have a clerk in here. So I, I mean, I'm asking you guys to please really reach out to the citizens. If the landings come out once a month, and you guys get to walk around like you're being elected once a month and hand those out and get out where the people are, you'll hear a lot more and have a lot more discussions than having people come to the town hall. And, and I wanna also say that changing the meetings, that should never happen, the meetings should always be on Tuesdays at seven o'clock. If that's what you wanted, and that's what you did. If, if, if the MML is getting in the way of that, maybe two people go to MML and three stay here, and next year you do the opposite threes, so that the town is always here, ready for the town meeting at the same time, same place all the time. If you continue to change it, you're not gonna get people here either, and this, this town hall floats. It's not right, it's not right to have the town hall flip if you want citizens to be involved, if you really want citizens to be involved. Thank you for your time.
I, I will explain the, the council manager form of government, do you think I should explain that now or take my. So the council manager form of government is functionally the way this government has run for at least eight years, I don't know if you know if it's longer, during now you've been here longer. So it's functionally how the government is running. Um, and a commissioner form of government requires commissioners to have the privilege of free time to be able to oversee. And it also puts non-professionals who do not have the expertise and experience over departments. And so it's sort of an antiquated type of government, and that we are actually just kind of matching the charter to what we actually do. Um, so that being a commissioner can be more accessible to everyone, even if they have a full-time job, so. I wanna let other folks um get up and share your thoughts, if you would like to, and if you're online and you raise your hand. I want to let other folks get up and share your thoughts if you would like to. And if you're online and you raise your hand, we'll notice. Okay. Set off the public comment.
Hi, my name is Ed Brown. I live in Elm Street. Just listening to what you just said actually brings up a point that it would have been nice to have some sort of a summary of the proposed changes. And that was perhaps have been delivered to all town residents. Explaining not just what the changes are, but why the council is making the changes. As you have just given us an explanation as to why the form of government is changing, but that's not clear from anything that you can see. If you look at it, are some of these changes based on a model legislation or a model town charter? Or are they meant to update to keep up with changes in state law or the the names of the courts in the state judicial system as we heard earlier? And it just would have been, I think, easier to people to have some idea of why this is all happening and why the council or the commission is felt necessary to propose these changes. Some of them, at least on paper, are fairly significant changes to the way the town is governed. So, thank you.
And we agree with that statement and that's why the survey exists and it will have that information on, when you go onto the survey to fill it out. So, so this is just to clarify, this is just an introduction. So we'll again look at it at a work session. If it's introduced tonight, we'll look at it at a work session. There will be a public hearing and that survey will be out and we will be pushing for everyone to take it before we actually vote to adopt it.
Well, then it would be nice to have some sort of more information about the process. So that there's no misunderstanding about what's happening tonight versus what happens in the next step of the process. And when we reach the actual decision point, none of that is particularly clear.
So I will make sure that we add the process, the information about the process to the survey and website. We want people to be engaged and we want people to understand what they're engaged with. We deal with this stuff all the time. And so sometimes we can get a little, oh yeah, this is this. And so it's really helpful for people to come out and say, the way you're communicating it to me is not making it clear. So we appreciate you. And please email us if you see that there's something and it's not clear. You can email info@uppermarlboroughmd.gov where you can go to our virtual comment box and put in a virtual comment. Those go immediately to staff. They respond to them very quickly. And we really do want everyone to not just have information, but understand information. Sorry, Chief.
So I gave you a packet initially. It only printed every other page.
Thank you. Thank you to our chief of police for printing packets for the residents. We appreciate your willingness to do that.
Just not to disrupt public comment, you made a couple of comments to understanding completely the need for community engagement and understanding. I heard previously about the desire to have more, whether it's a landings or something, something that's providing this information. In this year's budget, we had previously reduced the printing cost for the landings, thinking that people were more digital. People were more, you know, accessing technology and we've heard and understood and through being out, through community conversations, through these meetings, that there is a desire to get those landings back in folks' hands, which is why the budget that we're introducing to, that we're voting on tonight includes increased funding. So those types of communities, not more regularly. Also, just like with the previous charter amendment, survey was presented, it was presented online. It was also a number of us, I think all of us.
Hand delivered, walking around.
And that is part of the plan for distance following. So this is an introduction. It was delayed from the last meeting. So at this point with this introduction, it'll be six weeks before this is actually voted on. So these changes, this packet, hopefully everyone, and especially once the survey comes out and we'll be back out around to hand them out personally and have those conversations for anyone willing to have them and have those explanations. There's six weeks of time for those conversations to happen for that. Any types of amendments or whatnot that are desired to be, that data to be collected and for to be introduced. It is an iterative process. That's the point of this. And that's why we want to introduce it so that it gets in front of everybody and they understand our thought process. So just wanted to say that as well.
I think it's also important to say that we actually do get out in the community and talk to people. We don't just say there's no one at the meetings. And that can actually create tension between the folks who are at the meetings and the folks who we're talking about, talking to in the community, because we may hear something in the community that's different from what we hear at a meeting. So sometimes it feels like we're not listening to the one or two people are here, but maybe we've talked to five people in the community who have a different thought and opinion. And so that's a balance that we have to strike. It's part of our job. And I know all of us have conversations with a variety of people in the community. So it's really about meeting our residents where they're at and being able to engage with them in ways that is helpful to them. This board really does work to create compromises between the people we talk out without in the streets and the people who are here. We actually made changes to the last charter amendment based on the comments of folks who came in here. So we do really want you to engage and we do not ignore anybody. I have my head down and my pen out because I'm writing down what you're saying because it's important to me and I do not want to forget it.
And I want to piggyback off of that, the notion that we don't go around, we go around, we talk to people all the time. If you knock on someone's door, they don't answer, what can you do? We went around and spoke, put the flyers on people's doors and was asking them, do you have any questions? Is there anything that you don't understand? Because I always tell people, ask us the commissioners the questions because I don't want for people to get secondhand information because that could be very confusing and misleading.
Really get information from town directly, from staff, not even from us, because we can get it wrong.
If I don't know it, I would give it to you. So the last survey we did, we went to everybody's place, upstairs, apartments down here. If you don't answer the door, we left it on your.
Left it on the door. He sure did.
We walked around to everybody. I mean, and I go through town sometimes when people stop and talk to me. So that's when you guys think that we don't go around, we do it all the time. You know, so that's just what people like tonight. This is wonderful to see all these people here tonight. I mean, I am so appreciative of this, but when you tell people, come out to the meetings, you put it on social media, you put it here, you put it there. If they don't come, what more can you do?
You can listen to what they tell you when you're in the streets.
We need participation.
We will allow more, there will be more public comment allowed. Do you want to make?
I just want to say that we definitely need participation. We definitely do walk, we put flyers out. I'm going to piggyback off what Commissioner Brooks said. We knock on doors, we leave flyers. People don't answer the doors, we leave flyers. And sometimes I'm walking and maybe walking my dog and I see the flyers, you know, blowing in the wind and no one has even looked at it because it's blowing in the wind. So I know that they saw it maybe and they didn't pick it up to even read it. So us putting out the landings, I'm glad we're reintroducing that. But if it's going to be the same thing, it's a waste of money. We definitely need people to come in. We always get the same group of people. They're passionate about what they believe in and we hear you. But the other flip side of that is the people who are making the comments that are not coming to the meetings, it doesn't help us. Because we have people here that are making comments and, and so the comments, if your belief is different or your viewpoint is different, we need to hear that in the same room. And not you talk to one commissioner and you told them your view is different from what we're doing. We need to, we need you to be here in the meeting and to let us know what your viewpoint is. Because we can say, I spoke to like 10 people and they said blah, 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 blah. But it doesn't make a difference if they're not here in this room and they're not at that podium actually introducing themselves and introducing their ideas. It really helps us.
And if you can't make it to the meeting, you can go online.
Because we read them in the meeting. We print them out and we will read your comments in the meetings.
So we don't always read them. It kind of depends on time, but anything you send to info or to the comment box gets delivered to all of the commissioners. So you don't actually have to be here in person, but I do want to give.
I want to say one more thing. And I have definitely pushed for us to have, I'm just, I have definitely pushed for us to do surveys about this charter. And we got very little participation. And that, that's terrible because it affects all of us. We're all still residents here too. So it affects all of us if not too many people are actually responding to our surveys. And we've done them because I've been very active about it.
I remember going to your house. You guys were home.
But we actually did it online as well.
But we'll, we'll come up with some new tactics to get it, information out this time around, maybe some signs or something. So we'll work on that. But I do want to get us back to the topics of the day. So I want to give our last commissioner a chance to share any comments before we make, take a motion to introduce.
I guess, can I comment on the landings and stuff like that now or is that more later?
If you have it.
Save that for those reports or something?
You can, if you have any.
So, so the landings has changed dramatically through the years. I actually maintained it for a while in 2008, right after I got elected the first time around. It has been just a one sheet, front and back notice of meetings coming up and stuff like that. The commission from 2006 then turned into this magazine thing that I think they were putting out once a quarter, which was more about stuff that they had done in the past, but not so much about stuff that was coming up in the future. When I took it over, we tried to let people know about what was coming up at each meeting. You know, other events in town, things to be a good citizen. And then that also developed into, there's a citizens guide for residents of Upper Marlboro that I don't know if that's been updated in years. That had like who your elected officials are in the county and state and you know, information about like, don't put too much salt out on your sidewalk or you'll fill the bay. Stuff like that. So I don't know if we can go back to something more of that scale. So I think in the end it's like a legal sheet of paper that was tri-folded and stapled. I can
We're going to let.
Bring some in to show you what they look like.
Yeah, I have copies. We have copies in the back. So we're going to let staff determine how best to do that. I know that you guys probably remember when that first happened, I was said, we have to keep the landings and I got outvoted on that. And so now we're back to bringing the landings back. So I'm happy. But I'm going to.
I love for the help is I used to actually maintain it. So I can, sorry.
So is there a motion to introduce charter amendment resolution two dash 2025 council manager form of government? Is there a second? Assistant Thomas, would you call a roll for us?
Yes. Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Culbert?
Aye.
Mayor Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Waugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Horkley?
Present.
Is that an abstain? That's fine. It still passes. I'm just making sure that I have it recorded. Okay. So we're going to go on to ordinance 2025 dash O three, which is a town operating budget FY. This does need to be adopted today. And we have done extensive public outreach. When you've got your charter survey, you also got a budget survey. And we incorporated that into our decision making. There is actually, the next item on the agenda is this budget book that is meant so that you understand the budget and what it does. We're always looking for suggestions and comments about how this budget book can make the budget more understandable for you, but we are going to start by reading into the record ordinance 2025 dash O three and ordinance relating to adopting and approving the budget for the fiscal year 2026 along with the corresponding tax levies and to set forth compensation for employees and officers and to establish certain procedures for reviewing and amending same as more particularly set forth herein. And I will turn it over to our town administrator.
Again, this is ordinance number 2025 dash O three, adopting the fiscal year 2026. Project. I'm not sure if I read it.
I read it.
I'm doing it. All right. So the version you have before you now has not changed. It's the same that was introduced two weeks ago. The total revenue is over $3,718,333. The expenditures are also $3,718,233. It is a balanced budget. We, let me go to the.
They're at the top of page 41.
I do apologize. For the fiscal year FY 26, the town of Upper Marlboro shall hereby set at 38 cent per $100 of assessed valuation of residential property, 57 cent of assessed valuation for business personal property, 55 cent of assessed valuation for commercial real property. There will be a dollar 50 cent assessment for vacant property taxes, 25 cent agricultural use and $2 of assessed valuation for public utility operating real and operating personal property.
And your introduction, then I'm going to open it up for commissioners to ask staff questions and then we will do public comment and a motion.
Again, this budget has not changed. It is a balanced budget with revenues and expenditures and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those along with Chief first.
So I'm going to start with Commissioner Brooks. Yeah, I mean, we've mostly had. Yeah, it hasn't changed. So we're probably out of questions, but Commissioner Culbert, do you have anything?
No, no comments.
I do have one. Did we break out like our expenses for like Christmas? Or is it just everything's under special events?
You mean the, so there's, there's individual events. So there's the winter holiday is the event budget out page 57. The breakdown is in the budget book, which we'll talk about next, but if you want to look at it, that's, so there's a winter holiday event line. And then in public works, there is, yes, trying to find what page it's on. It's on page 72 and you'll see there is Christmas big four. 7250. See, this is. Okay. 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 Anything else?
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Horkley?
Yes, I'm not as up to date on all the details on this as I would like to be unfortunately. One question is, do we have any agricultural use land right now in town or was that annexed?
So, yes, we do have agricultural use land in town.
Is that the parks or?
No, it's the, I believe it's 27 acres owned by the Sasser family.
Oh, right. Because of the annexation. Okay. I noticed that there was a night shift differential for public safety. Is there a night or weekend differential for public works when they have to work?
So they usually get straight overtime. They're not working like two hours extra. They're working, I don't know if everyone remembers, they worked for 24 to 36 hours straight, multiple times this winter. So.
And I'm on page 41 of the booklet for the wondering. I noticed there was a mention of contingency if annexation or additional funding became available. Are there any contingencies if grants do not come through?
So we usually have contingencies. I can answer that for like for maintenance and repairs and stuff like that. We do have them.
And with regard to grants, the grants that we've already been advised we are receiving are in here. But the grants, like I think this, there's a $20,000 grant. I just got notice that we got today. That's not in this budget. We'll have to do a budget amendment now that, even though we're passing this tonight. So.
Competitive grants that we're applying for aren't in this budget either.
Right.
Okay.
If we get them, then we will have to do budget amendments.
I guess the staffing levels, I know that we do not currently have a town clerk, administrative admin clerk. I wasn't sure how many of the rest of these are new positions that are being created versus how many are currently. I wasn't sure how many of the rest of these are new positions that are being created versus how many are currently filled.
I'm gonna let our town administrator explain his.
Forty-one.
I mean, I assume, I mean, summer intern obviously is not currently filled.
So under general government, uh, the, the deputy town administrator town clerk hasn't been filled. We have an administrative assistant. Uh, we have a special assistant. Uh, we do have a circuit rider grant manager. That position is funded through a D H C D grant that we currently have. We do have one part-time special assistant and we'll be advertising uh for a part-time summer intern. So the only position that is vacant is the deputy town administrator town clerk and we are interviewing for that. I'm trying to set that up for next week.
Okay, and all the public safety ones are true?
Um, I'm not gonna speak. I'll let the chief speak for public safety.
Uh, no, not all of them. Most of them. There's one corporal missing.
Okay. Um, and I'd also mentioned to, to the town administrator yesterday that um previously the town used to have a police clerk. Um, so that way the work that was done for calls regarding tickets and dealing with flags and stuff like that is taken out of the police budget as opposed to the general government budget. I don't know if that would make sense in the future, so it's probably too late to try and do it right now.
It, a lot of that kind of depends on when the annexation goes through. Um, and as we will be doing budget, as we hope to be doing lots of budget amendments because we're gonna receive all the competitive grants that we've applied for, we should be able to easily do that with one of these um amendments with all the money that we're getting.
So you said, I'm sorry. But you said if we need any more grants, the budget will be amended to, okay.
We're actually gonna be looking at a budget amendment probably next month because this money just came in. We just heard it's coming in today. So, um, our, our town administrator has a much more efficient way to manage those amendments uh than we were using before, so it's gonna be much easier. Um, do you have any other questions? I want to make sure.
Uh, no other questions, and I already mentioned to the town administrator that on page forty-two, uh, Commissioner Culver's name is missing.
Yeah, well, we'll get him a line.
He don't wanna sign.
Don't worry, you'll, you'll have a line by the time we're done.
He don't wanna sign.
All right, so we're going to take public comment and then we will entertain a motion. So, same procedure for public comment on the budget. Can you check? Hold on, one, I just want to go through the, the pub, you can have another chance to comment once we get through the public comment. Um, which it looks like there isn't any, but. Okay, so hearing no public comment, I'm gonna uh go back to Commissioner Hurley's.
Um, yeah, I was, I was looking at the budget and not at the budget book. Um, the, so I, but there's no conflict in there that may be significant. Um, on page forty-one, it says that there is two dollars of excess valuation for public utility operating. Uh, on page fifty-nine, it says that it used to be two fifty and it was supposed to be two fifty continuing.
Okay, so that's an error in the budget book that we will fix during the next item on the agenda. Okay, we're, we're gonna go to public, back to public comment, yes.
Yeah, it, it was um, uh, I just wondered, because I saw ten thousand dollars in Marlboro. So, was that a cheap fact?
So, this Marlboro Day is unfortunately one of these events where if we cancel it, even if we cancel it twenty-four, forty hours ahead, we just lose money. Um, which is why we try so hard not to cancel it. Um, because, you know, barriers are rented and golf carts are rented and swag is purchased. So please enjoy your cups. Digital boards are out. All of that stuff is the bulk of the cost and it, it is a really tough thing.
There's no fines statement that came out. Uh, is that expected to bring in more revenue? And just as a cultural thing, I would say that even, it's probably really hard to positive discipline in my household. But really, my, my son, but uh, it, it would be nice if there were warnings for people or maybe the town that helps to like, you know, something they didn't have the resources to move out of the funders. You know, I, I found it, they found it changing. And, and the cultural thing, a small town, I, I think that we need to have this light one behind us. If, if, you know, maybe there's a difficulty, the reason why somebody has their, you know, their code, their stuff in this way up to code. And I would hope that we can have a way or method or a part of the uh governance that accommodates that.
I wanna answer that.
Oh, I wanna answer that. Okay.
So, um, some things we can help with, but some things um pose a liability to the town, like moving furniture and stuff like that. They have, if they hurt their backs, we're liable for that. So we have to be very careful, so thin line, fine line of what we can do and what we can't do to help. So we don't want liability, so we have to be careful.
Okay, yeah, I also, I do wanna allow uh our public works director to, to respond to that because I, just kudos to our public works director because no other staff member do I receive so many emails and phone calls about them going above and beyond assist with anything that he is able to within our liability restrictions, so go ahead.
Well, appreciate it. Pass a little bit of a shadow on what I'm about to say.
It's still true.
There's also a liability aspect as well for the homeowner, depending on what we face from the end of the problem. That's what I think is a lot that we can't do.
Yeah, you're not a professional.
And I should clarify that we're, we're not looking to find our residents. We're looking to work with our residents. Um, and we're not necessarily looking to find our downtown property owners as long as they're working with us. We have had a struggle with our downtown property owners refusing to do maintenance, um, not all of them. And we need to be able to, we need to get downtown looking better.
Then what about the county? Because that
That's a whole different conversation that we aren't gonna get into right now. And we, I, I'll talk about that during administrative updates because you've brought it up.
And one of the problems is that the vacant property is a tax, not a fee, and so it does not apply to the county.
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll give an update on that when we get to administrative updates. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, I see in our publication, uh, speaking with Coleman, who's talking about, you know, helping out, there is, one of our publications we have something talking about if someone needs a backup generator. What, what uh publication is that in?
It's in the landings, but it's also in our V I R. So also.
That's why emergency preparedness.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of P S As right now because we, we have you guys in front of us, um, and we're excited. But if you don't, if you didn't get an email today saying, hey, reminder, we have a meeting tonight, you're not on our V I R list and we want you to get on our V I R list.
Very important resident.
It's very important residence. V I R, it's called a very important residence. It goes only to residents, so there's the one you get on one Thursday with everybody else. And then there's one that's only for y'all. And if you didn't get it, please give us your email address after. Reach out to Town Hall, whatever, and we will get you the link to sign up for that. We do not publicize that link because then everyone would sign up for it and it wouldn't serve its purpose.
And, and you may need to check.
Okay. Any more public comments on the budget? Can you check online for me real quick? I just don't get our neighbors online. Okay. All right, uh, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, uh, would you call the roll for us, please?
Uh, Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Culver?
Aye.
Mayor Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Watt?
Aye.
Commissioner Culver?
Uh, stain.
Commissioner Hurley?
All right, now we will move on to the FY twenty-six budget book approval. Um, this is something we've been doing, I think this is our third year doing it. Um, and the purpose of it is to not just give you a budget document that is hard to understand but to make sure you understand what your government is doing for you. Um, we already caught one error in it, um, so if anyone else sees anything, do I'm gonna start with Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Culver?
Uh, no questions, just a comment. I appreciate, uh, I think this is a more detailed budget book than you've seen in the past in terms of outlining all of the different accounts, uh, line by line. I think that's good, if you wanted to have it to be able to understand. The full display of British tax authority.
No, I'm, I'm saying thing about that because you definitely, it looks like we have the accounts in order now.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurley?
Um, I caught a couple of typos and stuff like that, I mean, others on the, the two fifty thing, but I, this, this isn't legislation, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I think if you, if you don't mind sending the typos over to the town administrator, those can be corrected even after we've adopted it. So, all right, uh, public comment on the budget book, which is this thing with this pretty bright colors.
Again, uh, this, mentioning through I just picked up something on page, page sixty-five. Page talks about general government, there's, there's still a reference to the FY twenty-three budget.
Wow, we missed one. Thank you.
I'm assuming then that, that but then that brings up the question of whether this language has been updated in general, not just the wrapped up, just the number.
The language does get updated every, it gets read and made sure it's still consistent. Um, if a sentence is, is consistent, it doesn't on, but that doesn't mean that when we're reading it, we don't kind of see twenty-five when it says twenty-three, so.
Okay, so, so sentence, would we read the same, we will put in FY twenty-six? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any online comments about the budget book? You can just come up.
Um, just real quick, on page fifty-seven in the box in the right corner. Four, 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 area transfer for reserve, from reserves of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Interested in that? Why would be phoned from our reserves if we try and do a balanced budget based on tax revenues and raising and changing rates and all? Why you need that sort of thing?
Okay, I'm gonna get all your questions and then I'm gonna answer that, okay? That's okay.
And secondly, I saw somewhere here in order chart, and it is that a clerk wasn't on it.
You, you.
It's on page sixty-four, right?
Well, that is just a
Yeah, okay, clerk is missed.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, so, to answer your questions, the deputy town administrator is also the clerk, so we can just put a slash clerk on that. But the role is missing. And um, the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars being transferred from reserves. Um, we talked about, I think at the both of the last two meetings, the the previous, previously, right, the splash pad and playground was committed to and funding was approved to be allocated to the, that. And that total funding was, I think, a hundred and twenty?
For the splash pad, the total funding?
The previous. The previous, like, there was, there were funds basically committed from the town for the splash pad. Because the permitting has taken so long, those funds weren't spent in the years they were intended to be spent one at a time. They now need to be spent all together. Um, so it's, it's just this splash pad funding that has been planned for. It's just coming to today.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the FY twenty-six budget book with noted typos corrected? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, would you call that for us, please, Assistant Townes?
Well, um, Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Culver?
Aye.
Mayor Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Watt?
Aye.
Commissioner Culver?
Uh, stain.
Commissioner Hurley?
All right, um, and now we are on sale of surplus vehicles and I am gonna turn that right over to our town administrator.
Good evening, everyone. I didn't say good, good evening earlier. Apologies for that, so. Good, good evening, everyone. So tonight, uh, the town has two surplus vehicles. Uh, the private department has a two thousand nine Impala and the public works department has a two thousand twelve Ford truck. As an ordinance in place that basically requires that the board of commissioners, when we have uh sur, when we have surplus vehicles or surplus property, the board of commissioners gives uh permission to, to sell those pieces of property. If they're less than ten thousand dollars, uh, they can be disposed of by competitive bid. Uh, public auction, trade or exchange of goods and things like that, right? Um, what typically happens is that some governments, you know, some larger governments take their vehicles to auction. Uh, some governments do have closed bids and they advertise the, the vehicles to the public and we accept closed bids. Um, I think what we could probably get the, the best results from would be the closed bid process, so. Uh, so that's the plan for the town. I've already submitted a policy to the town attorney if we do agree to, to the closed bid. So we'll have a policy in place as well, um, before the vehicles are set for sale.
So you're asking us to approve the Impala and the public works truck to be disposable as surplus property? And you're planning to do that through closed bid through a policy that's approved by the town attorney?
And the reason that they're surplus is because, well, they're sur, well, they're not necessarily surplus. They're obsolete and unusable at this point, right? So, that's why.
Surplus is code for obsolete.
Yeah.
So what do we do with the money?
Comes in as revenue.
Yeah, but it comes in as revenue and out of the commission, I want to allocate it, it's up to you to allocate it.
And when we bought the public works trucks in December, selling that, this public works truck.
We talked about that.
Is considered offset revenue. It probably won't come in in the same fiscal year, but it's the same place. Well, okay, any questions about that? Um, Commissioner Brooks?
So, with the uh, the Impala in the two thou, two thousand twelve, we try, uh, you mean, you was gonna do a closed bid and you submitted the policy to the attorney? But then no money involved, I mean.
No, 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 it would be money, money involved somewhere, what do you think?
Uh, for the, for the two in vehicle.
What, how does a closed bid process?
Before you can add, we, we would advertise it.
Okay.
To, to, to anyone, and they would give us a bid. If they looked at the two thousand nine and said it's only five hundred bucks. You know, we would take the closed bid, someone may say a thousand. Um, and we, we would evaluate those bids, so when they came.
They'd just take the highest bid.
Yeah, we were trying to take the highest bid. If some bids are unreasonable, we may look at, maybe it's better to put it through an auction and all that.
Long as it gets a revenue, right, okay. So what year's Impala?
Two thousand nine, right?
Two thousand nine, the twenty, two thousand twelve, okay.
And this is the town truck that had the death rattle, I think you called it?
Yes.
So, do we even know what the blue book value is? Because, you know, if, if the attorney's fees to do the bidding is gonna be more than the blue value, would it make more sense to just send it straight dogs?
I don't think the attorneys have any, they're not playing a role. I don't, attorneys aren't playing a role.
Okay, we don't have to get them involved for the bidding, okay.
Um, one second, Aiden, would you do us a quick favor and look online? Apparently Linda Penoyer is stuck and she can't get herself out of the meeting and she can't hear us, so can you kick her out and she's gonna come back in? All right, back to the topic at hand.
Just on a player, you're just asking, might it for us to approve the disposition of the vehicles?
Just establish they are out, they're surplus and we can move forward.
And I know you have, I know Commissioner Watt asked this question, but just so I'm clear, whatever, whatever amount of money that comes from this essentially if it comes in this year, will turn into uh, reserve revenue and do an amendment. Whenever we do our series of amendments for the budget in, in twenty-six, definitely twenty-six, correct?
We can take money without a line, Adam. We just can't. Commissioner Law, any questions? All right, um. All right, um, public comments. If you're interested in purchasing vehicles that are in the parking, take a look at them. Uh, can you just make sure no one online has any questions? All right, uh, is there a motion to approve the? Impala?
Sorry, that was a, perhaps this would be, or maybe the motion should be disposition of surplus vehicle as opposed to sale.
Yes, disposition of surplus.
A motion.
Yes, disposition of surplus vehicles, because there's, there's some ways, but I moved, uh, you may need to help me.
I'm with the dispose of surplus vehicles as noted by the town administrator tonight.
Yep, you got it. Is there a second?
Second.
Would you call a roll, please, for us?
Uh, Commissioner Ross. Okay, I. I, Mr. Horberg.
Hi.
Mayor Franklin.
Hi.
Hi.
What's your thoughts?
Um, we are on to administrative updates. Um, I'm gonna, you don't like, don't leave yet, and you have general public comment, you're gonna get another chance to give it. Um, I'm gonna start by the promised update on the county buildings and then we'll see if anyone else has updates. Um, so the, we have been working very, very hard, uh, and for a very long time to work with the county on these vacant buildings and getting them activated. Uh, the Stone House, which is sort of at the intersection of Church Street and Ocrane Highway, uh, is actually something that our director of public works has been evaluating. Um, and we are waiting for cost estimates for what is going to cost us to repair it and get it up to speed. If those estimates are reasonable and the board decides to spend that money, then the ta, or the county has agreed to transfer that to us, and that will allow us to get that upgraded. Um, the elementary school, we, the old elementary school, I, we've been coordinating with them. We don't have any final information, but we may finally be close to getting it to the service again. Uh, but there's a lot of different ideas for that. Uh, the one thing that we've insisted on is that whatever happens to it, it needs to be a community engagement process, very similar to the one we used. Sorry, for the vision plan, so that, that we're really getting people engaged and that whatever is happening with it is happening with the community. Um, so, government does not move quickly, it is hard to overcome people's, uh, past hurts, and we have been working very hard at that, uh, and we are getting close, so, um, that's that update. Uh, I don't know if the commissioners want to provide any reports.
I do.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go, okay, in alphabetical again, or maybe not.
To pick it back off, where Franklin said, you know, I would love to own all these buildings. If we can, any buildings in town as we can, because that would be for us. But I've been on the board for what, a year and a half now, and when I first started, I was like, oh, good, we can use the county administration building for out the police department. That was a no go. Um, so, you know, the main thing here is, if we get these buildings, what would be the cost? Do we model them? Would we have the funds to do that? So that's the main thing we have to look at, is the cost. And to bring it back off administrative updates, very sad that we had to cancel our Marlboro event because I know the town administrator, Aiden and the staff.
We're pretty hard, guys.
Working really hard.
Thank you, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, and it was very, you know, we had to look at the safety of everyone else, because people were saying, oh, can we make it out? Um, can we wait, wait, wait until the rain stops? But, you know, some people, you know, where were the shelters gonna be to wait for the rain to stop? So that was just very difficult to cancel that, so that's all I have to say.
If, if we can have a round of applause for the staff and for Commissioner Brooke. Our events committee liaison, and he worked just as hard as anyone else on that. Commissioner Cole.
Um, first, I just wanna say, again, it's been mentioned a lot tonight and probably will be again, but this showing that we have in this meeting tonight is very much appreciated, very much needed, and hopefully, uh, this trend continues, because your participation, your voice is very much needed, wanted, desired, and, and, and considered in this process. So, please continue to come out and be a part of, a part of this as we're, as we're all working to move this town in a direction that we as a town want to go. Yeah, um, for me, um, Bill, I also mentioned that we all have the opportunity, uh, to memorialize, uh, many members of this community on Memorial Day with a leaf laying over at the schoolhouse pond on Memorial Day. Uh, it was rainy then as well, but I think it was a, it was a precious time for us to be able to take that opportunity. And remember, folks who have fought for our freedom, this, this community and in this nation. In terms of economic development, the economic development work group is still, is still moving. Uh, we've had conversations, uh, with a couple of businesses about opportunities and moving downtown, those are ongoing. We're trying our best to get, uh, new types of businesses in around the town, uh, on that vein or in that vein, for businesses that are currently in the town, we still have a pot of money in our FIP, uh, program, uh, that we've got an extension on for any type of improvements to businesses, um, buildings, properties, and then the town's gonna be gonna help those businesses in order to keep them thrive. Also looking at new programs, new opportunities, and trying to utilize funding, find funding where we can to be able to facilitate businesses in town, uh, in response to, uh, a lot of the comments that was said about what types of businesses are wanted here, and just restaurants, amenities and things of that nature. So definitely something that stays a priority, uh, for that group. Uh, and the next meeting, the regular meetings are first Monday of the month at five P M. Uh, so if there's interest, I know there's a number of people who shall, make sure we'll reach out and get that information so people can be a part of that as well.
Um, so, to, to tag on that, I've been involved in conversations with property owners and businesses downtown, trying to get some businesses located downtown. We did support one business's liquor license application, and I don't think they received it, which is disappointing. Um, but we do have a new restaurant that, they said May, but it's June, so I'm not sure when they're opening, but I know our town administrators are working really hard on that with them. Uh, we had the Memorial Day events, um, the soil conservation, uh, which is in town, had a seed giveaway. Um, and, um, we got twenty thousand dollars, which I already told you, chief, did you know that already, or am I telling you about your grant? And, yeah, um, we already did Marlboro Day, so I'm gonna turn it back over to Commissioner Lab.
Um, well, I attended the, uh, Memorial Day, uh, celebration. Uh, we didn't have a lot of participation because of the weather, but we, we were there and we, um, we had a nice service. Um, I also attended the, uh, community seed giveaway, um, at the community center. Yeah, I was there, I got some, some little seedlings. And I also attended the, um, historic preservation event on, um, May twenty second, which was very interesting. I had never been to, um, such a program, and it just brought me back to, um, what we're lacking here in the town, our communities. We need to get involved, and if we get this wonderful participation like we have tonight in some of our communities, historical committee, the, um, green team, we just need to get back on track. And if you guys wanna be a part, please email the town, and let's get started, because we need to put things back in place. And another thing, um, my goal, well, one of the things I've always stated is that we definitely need to put ourselves in position. So when properties become available, the town is in position where they can possibly purchase them. So we are working hard to position ourselves in that, in that way. Thank you.
I know you probably don't have a lot to report, but you want to say and share anything?
Hell, I mean, for last month, um, I did attend Memorial Day, so thank you all for putting that on. And then I also went to Cheltenham afterwards to visit someone who passed away just before the pandemic and hadn't been down there yet. So, um, I don't know if you all knew Bill Milligan, who used to run the, the food basket program. Um, and unfortunately also, I realized that, uh, Mr. Pride, who used to speak at our Memorial Day ceremonies, this past week too, he was, um, uh, a ski gear man, actually a radio man, and he's in the, uh, National Cryptography Hall of Fame. So, um, um, I've also been attending cert meetings, um, there was talk at the last meeting. I don't, I don't know who the town liaison currently is, and I assume I might take over that role.
It's, it's chief.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, uh, I think Tim Smith had been working with you, but he's stepped down from cert, I don't know if he moved. I'm not sure what the situation is at, but there was talk about, um, trying to hold some sort of practice exercise, either as part of the county cert, um, or his upper Marlboro cert, and invite officials there to see what sort of things cert does to try and get more interaction from the different municipalities. Um, also, the friends had their annual meeting last week. Um, there's discussion about trying to do another book sale, but there's a library policy that they're not allowed to take book donations that was set up during the pandemic that has never been lifted. Um, and we're also short of VP and secretary, because I stepped down from VP to treasurer, or as our treasurer stepped down. Um, but I also talked with Wayne about movie night, and he says that he thinks that they can partner with the town and you can use their license for the movies. If not, the other possibility is that they can't do it, an off-site thing would be having it just behind the library. Uh, the only limitation is they would need to coordinate when it is, because they've agreed to let Michaels, the new restaurant, use their parking lot after hours. So they would have to make sure that, you know, it gets cone off ahead of time, and they understand that they can't use it on whatever day we have a movie night.
Yeah, I've been talking with the ladies down there about that, but I haven't talked to Wayne yet, so.
Okay, yeah, Wayne is there.
Will work on that.
Yeah. Danger effectively, so, um, um, hopefully I'm gonna tour the facilities and stuff sometime soon. Um, uh, in regards to, uh, property standards, as you all got the letters of, you know, hey, um, I don't know if there's anything that we can, that, is there any grants still available under the status? The town is listed as a sustainable community, we went through rather arduous process to get approved. I know the governor vetoed some of the funding that was sustainable community grants. I don't know if there's anything else that might still be available through their S H A because of Main Street and, you know, other stuff. Uh, there, we used to have a list of all the grants. Um, also about fifty-some properties in town are considered contributing to the historic district, and so they are eligible for tax rebates for property improvements. Um, yes, upcoming, uh, the next cert meeting is this Saturday at nine A M. If anyone is interested, if you cannot make it, please let, but are interested, please let us know, because we were talking about moving the meeting times, um, because we have not been getting much participation for the last year or so on Saturday mornings. Um, I also attended the, uh, Bowie Wireless Association's meeting last night. For anyone interested in ham radio, there is something called the, uh, American Relay League, you know, missing an R, so Radio Relay League Field Day, where a whole bunch of stations get set up in public parks or wherever, and they practice, if this was an emergency, like, how many different places can we contact? Um, with, you know, setting up antennas last minute, um, it'll be June twenty eighth, uh, Bowie is having theirs in Jericho Park. Um, and anyone interested in board games, still do that every other Wednesday, next one is tomorrow night at six to nine, right here.
All right, uh, staff.
I would like to say welcome Commissioner Hurley, I wanna make sure I pronounce your name correctly. Right, yeah, is that, is that right?
Uh, so imagine it was Erk-Play.
Hurkley.
No, no, forget the H.
No H.
It's a, it's a French, it's a French approximation of a Basque name, so, looking at it confuses things more than anything else.
All right, well, I just wanna say, welcome, I look forward to working with you, I'll definitely be doing a lot of spell checking and double checking, so.
You all, we all have time, so it's not a big deal.
Like, yeah, I, I wanna say, um, an early happy birthday to Commissioner Brooks here. Uh, we're not gonna be here, uh, we won't have a meeting this month, so I wanna say, early, early happy birthday to Commissioner Brooks. Also, thank you Mayor Franklin, now you gotta go, but I say happy birthday to your son as well.
Thank you.
All right, um, I know Marlboro Day was canceled, but we did have a lot of really, I think we had a really, I think we had a, a lot of, uh, things that were scheduled that I think would have really, that the community would have really enjoyed. Um, one of the things that people seem to be really disappointed about, um, was the fishing derby, so we're gonna bring that back. I don't know what date it's going to be, but we're, we're gonna reschedule that again. Um, the fishing, fishing contests, but for the kids between five and fifteen years of age, so we're going to reschedule that.
Do that with community day? We put that in community day?
Well, they're in two different places. Okay, I mean, we could, we just don't wanna.
Possibly. Okay, and we also wanted to, I was thinking of, this is a commission, uh, decision, I think we could talk about it the next work session, but kind of really kind of expanding community day, but that's up to the commissioners, right? It's what, 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 what would like to be done there? We do have giveaways that we haven't given away, so, so, so we need to determine where that's going to happen and how that's gonna happen.
We need to do it right here.
Alright, so.
Yeah, but.
All right, and that's, uh, it's, it's budget season, and we are, we are applying for, uh, grants as, I mean, it's grant season, and we're applying for all the grants that we can possibly apply for, so.
Okay, Director Bond.
Uh, not much, uh, just wanna say one, welcome, uh, Commissioner.
Personally.
I apologize, I'm saying it wrong for you, I apologize. Just wanna say happy birthday, Commissioner Brooks, happy birthday to the young man, and, uh, I have something for you, sir, that I know you're gonna ask me. The deep high splash pad update for you all.
I know, I just find one more thing.
So it, it's, it's, it's chugging along, that's it. That, that everybody.
And they will not call you Commissioner Joan, and that would be, thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have on this.
All right, this one is splash, this splash pad.
It's the Departmentos. Enforcement.
Yes.
Can't forget that enforcement.
Oh, yeah, we had that, the school lane meeting with the school board.
Ah, yes.
Um, it should actually take a minute to, I, I don't think anyone here lives on school lane, but if you know someone who lives on school lane, watching or listening and you live on school lane, the Director Bond has a survey out for you to take, because the stormwater management project in, potentially involves removal of parking in some areas, and we need to know if that's okay with you or not before we move forward with that.
Where is it located, survey, is it online?
It is online, it was delivered to every, hand-delivered to the doors, or did you mail it?
In the boxes and whoever was outside, hand-delivered.
Hand-delivered, and we actually had a meeting on the street, we were set up in the middle of the street and met with four different residents, like, four different households.
Yes.
More than that, I think there were seven or eight residents.
There were seven or eight people.
Um, and we met with the school board today, so.
Yes.
Everybody manifest, pray, whatever it is you do for congressionally directed funding that we have requested to fund this project, because it is a two million dollar project, and you've just looked at our budget and you know we don't have two million dollars for that.
And so you, oh, I'm sorry, you said the surveys were mailed to them and hand-delivered? They were put on mailboxes for those who, the master of the door, for those who were outside, they were hand-delivered. How long ago was that? That was not last week, so, and, uh, for anyone that is listening and is interested in the survey, I believe the survey online says we needed the spouses by June fifth. Um, that was so we could have that information before we went into the meeting with the school board. If, uh, but we still need that information, so please take the survey.
We would love one hundred percent. Well, so, if you don't live on school lane or Wilson Lane, you don't get to take the survey, because, yeah, it's really just, it, it's not that it doesn't matter to the rest of us, but it impacts those residents in a way that doesn't impact the rest of us, and so they should have the say in that. Um, and so we will make sure we get one hundred percent participation before we break ground. Chief.
So, um, we can talk about the twenty thousand dollar grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so that'll have to be a board vote so that I can spend it, so I guess that would be.
We'll do that in July.
Also, um, we are due for July twenty sixth for the board to either approve or not, but approve the, uh, extension of the speed camera program.
Right.
So we have a three-year, a two-year extension, so it's just during the two-year extension, so that work session, I guess, goes only before the twenty sixth.
Okay.
July twenty sixth?
Yes.
So we'll look at it at the work session and vote on it at the regular meeting.
Yes, which is before the twenty sixth.
Uh, our regular meeting may have to have a special meeting ahead of it. Um, our regular meeting may have to have a special meeting ahead of it to introduce the budget amendment to allow chief to spend the twenty thousand dollars. So just be aware of that. Okay, um, all right, hearing nothing else, we are now at preliminary approval of the next meeting. Oh, we're right, we do that first. Sorry, general public comment.
I know the budget. We, the town makes a good bit of money from the speed cameras, but uh they're not really slowing people down except between the places where the cameras are. But wondering if there's anything else that the town can do, engage with the state or the county to try to calm down traffic even more on former of a pipe.
So we can absolutely engage with them, um, and that can be one of our big asks. This, I think we can make that an ask this legislative session. I do know that was told that the state, that the state is not funding any surface transportation projects this year, this fiscal year. But this can definitely be on our list of things to engage with our delegates.
Thank you. As I was talking about, it's not a this is a private thing, but the the house at fourteen thousand four, um, which is has been empty and gutted and abandoned. Some people have made it, but this is now actively in the market. People are coming to look at it, so then they'll have buyer and so someone who rehabilitated and bring it back into active use as a rest of the same.
So we're selling you houses and cars today.
I I know that you guys were at, Mary Paul, her film tree, um, that you guys were at the historic preservation. Um, and there was something mentioned about East Georgia's County now being part of the program, the Anacostia River Trail. I was thinking, wow, would that ever be cool if there was a way to connect, you know, and get some of the uh, you know, the water trail action here to connect. Make, you know, make a uh, you know, go around the historic properties, you know, just something that we would have as an attraction to the town. But I don't know if they have money, what the money situation is, whether it sounds like they were sitting kind of pretty. What was your impression?
So, oh, so I can answer this question and and you, I did not share this and I should have. We um have become part of the Anacostia Heritage Trails so association. Um, it does, it's area, isn't it?
Yeah, area.
Like athletes, you know. Um, the point is that that is now expanded into us and it opens us up for a lot of funding opportunities. And in anticipation of this, their director, Megan Bago, reached out to us and said, apply for this grant, um, because you should be eligible to it for it. And our town administrator did apply for a grant related to the um twenty seven acres uh that we purchased and the um feasibility study for the bike trail that uh, we have done before, but it will open us up to this grant round every year. Um, and so we would love for you all to um email us or pop in the comment box or share your ideas with us here so that we can have those ideas as we move forward with this.
And um, the, I was unclear what the twenty thousand dollars is for, that the grant is for.
So it's the expansion of the asset control and security cameras at Green Police Station.
Okay, great. And then one more thing, I I keep fantasizing that it's not very quaint of that, um, oh, come on, Mary, uh, the development, you know, the Ryan Holmes, the, it's not very quaint. And it's a straight shot down Old Marlboro Pike. And I just wonder if they, if the people there wouldn't love to have a little downtown that's quaint that they could, you know, if there'd be a shovel or something to, that can help boost our downtown. And I don't know if there's been any way to approach the developers there or, you know, that's all. I just have a fantasy, I thought I would share.
That's a great idea.
Uh, I'm sorry, the Ryan Holmes.
I think you mean riding. There's one, I remember riding.
It's West Malia. It's West Malia.
Uh huh.
The whole development.
Oh, West Malia.
It's West Boy.
Oh, yeah.
But it's on Route four.
Because we have.
Yeah, actually.
No, it actually can't hear.
Yeah.
Actually can't connect.
So hold on, I want to make sure you're done with all your comments. Okay, because it sounds like we're going to have a discussion about this, so make sure you had your chance to talk.
As I was pulling out to come to the meeting today, I noticed the sign went up on the bus station that's on my property saying that Metro was redoing everything, the Metro Bus, so I don't know. I couldn't read the whole thing, you know, shit driving pass, so I'll have to look at that and I'll take a picture and pass it along to everyone. So they're doing something.
I do know that, I do know that Charles County is looking at a Charles County connector. I don't know if it's light rail or high-speed rapid transit or what exactly it is, but I think we need to it's on my list. I was at a meeting for work and learned this. It's on my list to contact them from here. Um, and talk to them about, you know, what our potential to connect into that is. Um, obviously, it's a county decision, but if we understand what the potentials are, we can advocate for that. One of the things, I got to go to a career day, and one of the things whenever I'm in a school, the kids always say to me, you know what? They all want the same thing, a metro stop here. Um, so we definitely want to look at those types of things as we expand.
There is, there is something called all of us that they uh Metro runs or PG County runs. That is, you know, if you know ahead of time that you're going to need a transit, they will, you know, coordinate to pick you up and drop you off.
All right, any other general public comment?
I simply, I forgot to thank everyone for coming.
Hold on, we have more general public comment.
I was just piggybacking on the that we have the cameras. Where I live in Marlboro Town, the cameras help immensely.
Okay.
The traffic has slowed down. I'm able to get out and get back in, so it does make a big difference. So isn't there a way to just put the cameras up just to have them even if they don't work? Maybe it's all there over the map.
Yeah, I want that ticket.
When they work, they're bringing us a lot of money and they give us eight thousand dollars a month. Is it eight thousand dollars a month?
Yeah.
There was someone in who built one of those little free libraries that looked like a traffic camera and the county ended up picking it down.
Those little lens on it.
And people, people have people raping them, so. But we are looking at expanding that program. I am glad to hear that. I will note, because you are from Marlboro Town and you did mention lights, you do all have a pole down. It is on our us to repair. Our Director of Public Works has been struggling to get someone to return his calls to give him a vote to repair it. So you are welcome to assist him with that, um, but we hope to have it repaired by the end of this month so that the expense can go into this fiscal year.
Yes, that's important. But then I go all the way in the back by the woods. When I come home, it is, I can't see anything.
Okay.
They do ride them there tonight. Because that's not.
Part of the lighting is making sure that things are, like if you notice that a light is buried in in trees, we want to talk about trimming, um, but then we need to talk about some other lighting solutions as well. Probably in next year's budget when we're not finally having to pay the bill for.
And I believe TEPCO had changed their policy on how bright their lights were. So it's now supposed to be closer to a full moon rather than daylight, which is why it is not as bright.
Oh.
Because supposedly that that gives.
John, that's John.
Any joke, Fisher?
It does help because there are, there are issues that if you light too brightly, everything else is in shadows. Your eyes adjust to that and you can't see what's actually going on around. But at full moon, you can't tell color. You know, you might be able to see some things there, but your your sight is still limited. So it's it's a trade off and I've been, and it's probably more for the cost than anything else that they're doing it.
I'm going to move the conversation about lighting to once we uh get through the next two minutes here of just getting the agenda for next time and closing out. Because there are, TEPCO's up to a lot with changes. So um, but next agenda is next agenda is going to include the charter amendment um for discussion. And even though it's a work session, I say this, um, and people don't always remember it. In a work session, when we are talking about something big, like the budget or a charter amendment, we suspend the rules to allow public comment on that item. Um, so like the work session we did in February, we specifically, we had had lots of meetings ahead of that for public comment. We allowed public comment at the beginning and then we all got down to work, which had to happen. But generally at the work sessions, the rules are suspended to allow public comment on any item that is very important. And honestly, if you show up here and there's an item that feels important to you and we haven't deemed it as important and you asked to have public comment for that, we are likely going to suspend the rules and allow you to do that. So charter amendment. You have some other stuff, like some, do we need to start talking about policies? Are the
We're going to talk about the, um, the, what we're going to talk about, well, well, you mentioned committees and community day.
Committees and community day.
And then we revised our conversation on the continuity of operations plan, although that's been suspended for some time now.
Yeah, you
Gotten through the budget.
You asked for that and we had to suspend it, the continuity of operations plan.
Um, and and I'd like to review the elections ordinance. Uh, basically, the reason being that the election ordinance says that the elections procedures manual has to be passed as an ordinance itself, which means that if the supervisors of elections come back with recommendations, we're going to need three months to be able to actually get the public, uh, the procedures manual done, unless we call it as a special meeting and do like an emergency ordinance, aren't it? So I'd like to at least change that part to be, you know, that it's done as a resolution instead of as an ordinance.
Do you understand that change request? Okay, so what, staff will draft the change request and it will be part of the um meeting. Okay, we'll let you know if other stuff gets added. Um, that meeting is on July eighth. Um, there is always the potential for the annexation to come up. Uh, and so, you know, look for July eighth to have potentially be a special meeting, uh, if the annexation documents are ready to go.
All right.
Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So motion.
Oh, go, hold on. That was Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Culver is our second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.
And I forgot to thank you.
To leave immediately.